Good evening. We'd like for everyone to please stand for a moment of silence and pledge to the flag. Pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This time we will call the meeting for order. And first thing would be our agenda. And before I approve the agenda, I would like for to remove for later for a discussion Discussion on the suspension of the policy FF and also on naming the Rock Hill Schools' new administration office. For discussion on those two. All right.
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor? Show your hands, please. And second by Jane Shaw. And the changes was to pull B and C for discussion. All right, at this time, we will have Dr. Cook to do recognition.
It is my pleasure to bring some recognition to some very special folks this evening. First off, we want to have our recognize our school resource officers. Rock Hill Schools has a strong partnership with local law enforcement agencies, the Rock Hill Police Department, and the York County Sheriff's Department. Working collaboratively, Rock Hill School staff and law enforcement agencies, along with students and parents strive to provide a safe and secure learning environment for our students. Tonight, we would like to say thank you to representatives from the York County Sheriff's Office and allow each officer to share a personal story. At this time, I'd ask for Sergeant Tim Lee, Program Supervisor, Corporal Dan Hoberg, and Corporal Tanya Bennett to come forward and share their story.
Sergeant Lee with the Sheriff's Office, obviously, these two behind me make me look really good, so I just want to take a moment. This is not about me tonight, but thank y'all. We have, I think we have a great working relationship with the Rock Hill School District, also with the Rock Hill Police Department. We represent a very small minority in terms of the schools that we have in your school district, but we make a large impact, and it's all because of them. Y'all've got two of the best in the state representing the Sheriff's Office there. So I'm gonna let them speak, but thank you again for taking the time just to recognize us.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Deputy Dan Hoberg, I'm currently the School Resource Officer at Rock Hill High School. I've got a lot of stories to tell. I mean, I've been there a while, but I gotta tell you, it's a challenging job, working with the kids and the staff, and I have a great working relationship with the staff and administration. We work well together as a team to make sure that these kids succeed in what they're doing. And it's very rewarding to me to see them from start to finish, from freshman all the way through graduation. Of course, we all know we have our problem children and the challenging students that we have, but it's great to see them graduate and to get through the mess that they're going through and just be successful and go on to the next level. So I love my job. I appreciate the folks I work with. I appreciate the kids that are there. And again, it's very rewarding, and I love it. Thanks.
Hello, I'm Corporal Tanya Bennett. I'd just like to say thank you for having us here and honoring us today. I've been with Rock Hill School District for 13 years, at Castle Heights, the same school, but hold 13 years, so it's family, it's home to me. I love working with the children there. That's one of the reasons why I became an SRO. Worked in the church with youth and just in the community, so that was what I asked for when I became a deputy, when something came open, if you would just allow me to go inside the schools. I worked in York School District for a while, and then I came here, and it's just been a pleasure. I have lots of stories to tell too, but I guess most rewarding to me is when kids come back from college or different things and they're grown up and just telling me the different stories or, you know, thanking you for giving them opportunities and things like that. So to me, I think everybody still has my phone number, so constantly get calls, get calls, and I guess for me, it's rewarding because some of them, you know, call me Mama, Mama Bennett, or Mama, and I was like, okay, officer, but it still works, whatever. You know, they know at times that you don't have to go into different roles, but it's appreciated and there's, you know, respect among them to me and likewise. So I just thank you all. It's been great working with the different schools. I see you coming inside the school sometimes, and that's appreciated to see, you know, the kids, to see you all come inside the school, and I just appreciate everything that Rock Hill School District has done. Thank you.
May I ask a question of these offices? Thank you for coming and for being a part of Rock Hill School District's force. That's what I call all of us as a part of the force. Is there anything that you can tell us that would be of benefit to the students before they leave home on their way to school? Is there anything parents can do or people like us can talk to them about that they might need to work on once they are out of school and you're not seeing them every day? Is there anything that we can do to encourage them before coming back into the schools? Can you give me an idea of something that I can do or how can I say something? Or can parents encourage their students to do something better than they have been doing before?
In my opinion, I think the most important thing that parents could do for their child is to get involved.
Okay.
Get involved with their education, their homework, get involved with their activities at the school. Personal experience that I've seen that students get involved with school activities have less chance of getting in trouble and so forth, and they're more focused on academics, that type of thing. So I would encourage the parents to get involved in that way and encourage their children to do that.
Very good. Is that just to include programs that are taking place after school hours? For example, if they're playing in sports or they're on the band, of course.
There's so many extracurricular activities at a high school level, they have their choices. We had the drama club going on. We had various clubs that goes on other than sports. And for them to get involved in something, it really changed their mindset at a high school level, in my opinion. Once they get involved like that, it just less time to do anything else.
That's good. I hope there's a way for them to get back home. You know, once they get to school and the bus goes back home, if there's an activity that requires practice and to perform after school, what, how can...
I think maybe that's something that could be worked out through the board.
Thank you.
Ms. Duggan, I have a quick comment.
Ms. Miller.
I just want to say thank you. Thank you for the work that you do each and every day. I know that sometimes it's probably not easy, but what you do is really, truly making a difference, and we appreciate you. I appreciate you as a parent and as a board member. So, thank you.
So with that said, please join me in thanking these fine individuals. Our second individual that we would like to recognize tonight, excuse me, is Brooklyn Martin. Congratulations to Brooklyn, who is a graduated senior from Northwestern High School for receiving the fifth Congressional District of South Carolina Student Art Award. Each spring, the Congressional Institute sponsors a nationwide high school visual art competition to recognize and encourage artistic talent in the nation and each congressional district. Since the artistic discovery competition began in 1982, more than 650,000 high school students have participated. Students submit entries to their representative's office. Panel of district artists select the winning entries, and winners are recognized both in their district and at an annual award ceremony in Washington, DC. The winning works are displayed for one year at the U.S. Capitol. And I am glad to have learned that Brooklyn will be attending Winthrop University in the fall as an art education major. So we might offer her an early contract tonight. So Brooklyn, please come on up and let's give her a round of applause and congratulations. And we're glad to have Brooklyn's mom here as well. Thank you. Our next honoree is that once again, Rock Hill Schools has a winner in the South Carolina Economics A Picture is Worth a Thousand Words Contest. Oakdale Elementary School student Sydney Campbell was one of 16 award winners for more than 600 entries from across the state. Her winning entry will be featured in the 2018-19 Economic Concepts Calendar and distributed across South Carolina. The students were recognized at the 29th Annual Awards Luncheon in Columbia. Each winner received a certificate, $25, and a framed copy of their work, as well as a copy of the calendar next school year. And as you can see, Sydney has a row full of supporters tonight from Oakdale, her principal, assistant principal, teacher, and family, and we are so proud of Sydney. Sydney, come on up and let us honor you and congratulate you for your hard work. That concludes our recognition for this evening.
May I add just a comment to that? Sydney is one of my great-grandchildren.
I need to go back and make just one little correction, and that is that the local news media has been notified of this agenda for this meeting on...
June 27.
Thank you. All right. Not have any citizen participation? Let's move to the consent agenda. For motion?
For weeks of the agenda.
Jane, this... Motion was made by Jane Shaw.
A second?
And...
Terry.
Second by Terry Hudson. All in favor, raise your hand. All right, now we will move to the action agenda. And first, we will have Ms. Terry Smith to come forward with the general budget, fund budget for the year of 2018-19. Good evening.
Tonight, administration is requesting approval of the fiscal year 2018-2019 general fund budget. In your packet tonight, you have a PowerPoint and you have the proposed salary schedules for next year. I have provided the board with an updated PowerPoint on the general fund budget to include recent information that we have received from the State Budget Conference Committee. The PowerPoint is different from the PowerPoint that is in the board packet. In regards to the proposed budget that the board will vote on tonight, there have been no changes to the proposed budget since the public hearing on June 11th. The general fund is the main operating fund for the school district. It accounts for all of the operating revenues and expenditures for the educational and support programs of the school district. The general fund budget is the financial plan for the operation of the school district. It is approved by the Board of Trustees annually. Annual appropriations will lapse at June 30th. Any amendments to the annual budget must be approved by the Board of Trustees. Our proposed general fund revenues for fiscal year 1819 are broken down into local revenue, state revenue, and other revenue. Our property taxes, LEA, the district is projecting an increase in the property tax revenue for next year. Administration is requesting a six-mill increase in our operating millage. The six-mill increase will generate approximately $1.7 million. $5.6 million of the increase is due to an increase in the value of a mill. The total taxable assessed values in our area have increased over the past year. This budget is based on the Education Finance Act base student cost of an increase of $60, which is the Senate version. This increase, this increases the base student cost to $2,485. I am not showing an increase in revenues for next year due to our percentage of state support, which has decreased to 74% versus 75% for the fiscal year 1718. The Tier III reimbursement property tax, this is the sales tax revenue reimbursement that we will receive from the Department of Revenue for loss of tax revenue due to Act 388, and we are projecting an increase of approximately $587,000. Fringe benefits and retiree insurance, we are, we receive funding from the state to help offset the cost of fringe benefits to our, for our employees. We are also receive funding from the state to help offset the cost of insurance premiums for our retired employees. We are projecting an increase of approximately $514,000. Other state revenue, we receive additional state revenue that accounts for 0.85% of our proposed budgeted revenues. We are projecting an increase of approximately $50,000 for our bus driver salaries. Transfer for, from our special revenue funds, the teacher salary supplement and fringe, we are projecting an increase of approximately $970,000 to help offset the cost of teacher salary increases and fringe benefits. Transfer from other funds, indirect costs, district is able to charge indirect costs to our federal, federal grants and to our food service program. The indirect cost rate is calculated annually by the State Department, and we are projecting an increase of $75,000. Our total proposed general fund budget is an increase of nine, is an increase of $9,561,687 over the current year's budget for a total of $160,748,977. The increase in property tax revenue, we are seeing an increase in the value of a mill. Current value of a mill is approximately $294,000. We are requesting a six-mill increase, and that is assessed on businesses, rental properties, and vehicles. This is not assessed on the owner-occupied primary residential homes. So if you have a 6% property that is appraised value at $100,000, that is a $42 increase in taxes. Our current operating millage is 159.4 mills. The requested operating millage will be 165.4 mills. Our Education Finance Act base student cost, it should be $3,018 by law. The proposed budget is based on the Senate version, which is the $60 increase from 2004-25 to 2004-85. No increase in the budget for 1819 because of the percentage of state support has decreased. So that means 26% of the base student cost must be funded locally from our local revenues. This is a pie chart of our proposed general fund revenues. Our local taxes account for 36% of our revenues. Education Finance Act base student cost accounts for 27%. Property tax relief accounts for 17%. Other state sources account for 16%, and then other revenue accounts for 4%. The fiscal year 1819 proposed general fund expenditures. Salaries and benefits are increasing due to step and cost of living adjustments, as well as new positions that are proposed for next year. Salaries are increasing approximately $4 million. Benefits are increasing approximately $4.4 million, which is due to the associated taxes and retirement on the salary increases and on the new positions, as well as retirement rate increases and health insurance premium increases. Purchased services are increasing approximately $1.1 million. Utility services are increasing almost $90,000 for electric and gas. Supplies and equipment are decreasing $179,000. Other fees and expenditures are increasing $86,000, and the transfers to other funds are decreasing $150,000. Our total proposed expenditures for next year are $160,748,977, which is a balanced The items that are included in the proposed expenditures, we have a step increase and a 1% cost of living adjustment for eligible certified employees that are paid on the teacher's salary schedule, and that is based on the Senate version, and that would be funded by the Education Improvement Act. Step increase in the 1% cost of living adjustment for all other eligible employees not paid on the teacher's salary schedule. Employer health premium increases of 8.1%. Employer retirement rate increase of 1% plus the estimated 0.5% for retirement surcharge. Increase in utilities, increase in the substitute budget. Eight positions for Cherry Park Elementary School, which we will be opening up next year. We have three positions for the immersion and inquiry programs. Eight positions for the behavior management assistants. We currently have 10 behavior management assistants, including eight more for next year that will allow us to have one behavior management assistant in every elementary school and central child development center. These behavior management assistants will be trained in crisis prevention intervention techniques and other trainings and data collection, strategies and interventions that are best practices. They will support our students in crisis in order to continue to assess, access the general classroom through redirection and de-escalation throughout each day. They will support general education classroom teachers as they work with our children in crisis by modeling best practice strategies, approaches, and interventions that will benefit the child in crisis, as well as other children in the classroom. They will check in and check out with students that are exhibiting concerning inappropriate behaviors to start and end the day with positive and nurturing directions. Students with disabilities that are in the general education classroom will be the primary population on the behavior management assistant caseload. We have two positions, resource teachers that will, that are included in the budget, two Catawba mental health service providers, and these providers provide services to students that qualify for mental health services, that is through preschool through high school, provide services for the alternative programs, which is Raven Academy and Renaissance. And we also have a self-contained classroom teacher. 5.5 positions for the high school level, this is for student course selection. We have two positions for the middle school level in order to maintain the teen philosophy, philosophy. We have five positions at the elementary position in order to maintain current teacher-student We have 11.4 positions that have been moved from special revenue funds to general fund. These are teachers and assistants. We have 10 additional days for middle school guidance counselors, 10 additional days for middle school band directors, bus driver hourly increase of $1 an hour, and Phase 2 of our salary study recommendations for the teacher's salary schedule and maintenance salary schedule. Items that are contingent on the outcome of the General Assembly, these items are the bus driver hourly increase of $1 an hour and the Phase 2 of salary study recommendations for the teacher's salary schedule and the maintenance salary schedule. Here is a pie chart of our proposed general fund expenditures. As you can see, our salaries and benefits account for 87% of our budget. The General Assembly, the Budget Conference Report is to be presented to the House and Senate by Wednesday. The General Assembly is scheduled to meet June 27th and June 28th. General Assembly has passed a continuing resolution, which will enable operations to continue in state government, which also includes the school districts if the General Assembly fails to reach an agreement on the state budget by July 1st. Funding will continue based on the current level of amounts appropriated in Act 97 of The Budget Conference Committee has had recent budget discussions, and I wanted to mention that tonight. They met June 18th, and their recent discussions is two options. Option one is the, based on the Senate version, and that is the $60 increase in base student cost and a 1% cost of living adjustment for teachers. The 1% cost of living adjustment would be funded from the Education Improvement Act. Option two is a $55 increase in the base student cost and a 1.5% Option two is a $55 increase in the base student cost and a 1.5% cost of living adjustment for teachers. The 1.5% cost of living adjustment would be funded 1% Education Improvement Act and 0.5% Education Finance Act. If the outcome from the general assembly is option two, which is the $55 increase in the base student cost and a 1.5% cost of living adjustment for teachers, a budget amendment and revised salary schedules will be presented to the Board of Trustees for approval at the July 9th board meeting. If option one is presented to the general assembly for vote, no budget amendment will be required on July 9th. However, if option two is presented to the general assembly for the vote, then the budget amendment will be presented to the board July 9th. Is there any questions?
Yes, I have several. I wanted to ask about the behavioral management assistants. Are they permitted, and this may not be to you, it probably is to, to Bill. Are those people allowed to work on academics with the children whom they are supporting? Is that permissible?
Their focus and training will be on behaviors in particular, but while they're under the care and guidance of that, that adult, certainly there's going to be the need to continue some of that extension work from the classroom, but there will be a specific behavior focus primarily. But yes ma'am, there would be the opportunity for that to-
But the, you know, kids with behavioral problems so often also evident, and there's certainly a connection between behavioral problems and academic problems. So it would seem reasonable that they would also be, be involved in, I remember you saying, if you work in schools, you're going to work with children. So it's not that they only deal with misbehavior. They can be involved in structuring appropriate behavior too. Is that right?
Absolutely. And, and the focus is on their behaviors so that they can re-enter the classroom to continue to be more successful.
Okay. I also wanted to ask about a couple of other things. I mean, this is a tight year, obviously, right? So I want to know how some of these positions you do posit will increase student performance. What is high school student course selection and why do we need 5.5 of them? What do they do? I mean, that, that, that helps our children perform better and learn more.
At the high school level, remember the master schedule is driven by student selection and choice and voice and looking at those opportunities where we've increased the offerings at the high school for students to take advantage of career and college-ready courses. And so those courses, those additional positions are to ensure that, that student ratio, student to teacher ratio are maintained as well as the low. So those positions are distributed across all the high schools and across all content areas.
But there's specific court, there's specific courses. It's not just more guidance counselor.
Right.
I mean, not that they're not important.
Those 5.5 positions are for specific teachers-
Okay, good.
-in the, in the content areas. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then another one is plain, explain to me what middle school to maintain team philosophy. How is that going to help?
In, in middle school, one of the challenges that our middle schools face is having teachers who teach math, science, ELA, social studies, and so trying to allow those teachers to have more of a balanced schedule so that they can team.
Okay.
And so a two or four-person team is more desirable than one teacher having to teach all four content areas where certification is and, and would be problematic. And so trying to allow for that opportunity for schools to have multiple teachers teaching those content areas.
Okay. And then talk to me about 10 additional days for band directors.
Well, addressing goal three of the board's goals and looking at performance and those students who aren't typically recognized. But I think as Ms. Smith has pointed out several times, those band instructors are already working many of those days and putting in a lot of additional time that we haven't been necessarily compensating them for. And so this is a means of addressing that and trying to, as we want our arts programs to be high performing and making sure that we've got quality programs in place.
Yeah. Thank you. They just seemed a little bit interesting in, in face of what we're facing from a very non-supportive legislature. So, thank you for your explanation.
I have one. I'd like to ask if, if the emphasis on student teacher ratio, if, if this is the place for us to say anything about the reducing the number of students per teacher in the current calendar. I see you have a ratio of 1 to 24 for K through second grade. Is this, do you think this is going to help us with the challenges that we have throughout all of our grade levels? Will putting more teachers there, will that reduce the number of students who are not meeting the, the broad band where I think the focus needs to be? We have, when you, when you look at the number of students that are underperforming, the ones that are at average and add those two together, that gives us a big picture as to where our students are performing. I'm hoping that this focus will help us give teachers and students a chance to become more proficient early on rather than have them filter their way up through the grades and continually get farther and farther behind as the time passes. So would that ratio help? Would, would the proposed, the items conclude, the items included, is, is that going to help us with our deficiency in those two areas in the average and below average performance? What is our ratio now?
Our, our, our teacher student ratio-
Yes.
-is 1 to 24 for K through second grade. We have 1 to 25 for third to fifth grade. Middle school is 1 to 27. And then for the high school, it is dependent on the course selection.
Okay.
So the, the five positions that we are adding for the elementary, that is just to maintain the current teacher-student ratio at the elementary level. So this budget does not address lowering that class size.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Reed, I think I would, I would also like to add that with Dr. Campbell and many other district staff, with our principals continuing to look at those class size ratios and making adjustments where needed, trying to give certainly the opportunity for some differentiation within buildings and classrooms in particular. The teacher ratio, along with several other things that we're doing, are intended to address those needs that you're identifying. We know, we know those are concerns, but through our summer programs, through the, throughout the year, some of the strategies and other additional things that we're putting into place, I would emphasize that the behavior management support people that we're putting in place will also help teachers to work with those children, you know, create an opportunity in that environment for learning to take place at, hopefully at an accelerated level. So all those factors combined and resources partnering will create that alignment for increased student achievement is the goal.
I notice it is on the, you know, when we get this on our agenda, there's a little section at the top that has a professional code. And the first thing that I see there is to put students first. That's our primary goal. And I'm hoping that if that's our primary goal, that we should be putting teachers in a position where they can focus their attention on the needs of their students. And that's one of the reasons why I've been so consistently advocating for a smaller ratio of students per teacher, especially, especially in the kindergarten, first, second, and hopefully third grades. I don't know that it would make a tremendous difference, but I'm hoping that, that that will be something that we can continually put our, we need to put our attention there. That's the first thing that's on this, this professional code. Everybody who reads it says, "Put students first." And I'm not sure that our budget is going to do that when we look at it overall.
I think to address that point, there are several themes within this budget that we are trying to address with mental health, with behaviors, creating that safe and orderly environment, that classroom-
Yes.
-so that our teachers can do what we want them to do, they need to do, and that they want to do. And certainly, I think by continuing to increase those resources for students and teachers, then I really feel like this budget is taking a, a good attempt to make that a, you know, for us to realize that ultimately students are first in our district and that we are putting their, their behaviors, their, their mental wellbeing, so addressing those physical, mental, and social issues so that achievement can be the focus.
I'm, I'm very hopeful that that will happen. I, I served on the mental health board and directors for 13 years and served as chairman of that, of the Catawba Mental Health Board for a portion of those 13 years. And I have been very passionate about what happens for students who are milit, who are mentally challenged because of some, some dysfunctional families, some things that might have happened to them and their exposure to the community. I'm not sure if, if any of those experiences that I've had will help me in making a decision like this or not. But I'm hopeful that putting students first will help me, will help me drive the decision that I'm, that I'm making. I'm, I'm not trying to belabor this issue, but I'm hopeful that when I look back over the course of my, my 10-year on the Board of Trustees here, almost 18 years now, and out of that portion of that time, part of that was with the mental health board. I'm not sure that, that this, well, I've said enough. Hopefully, we'll be able to address those concerns. I will not be supporting the budget though, as you have outlined it now.
I just want to make a comment that I think it is our state government, rather than our school district, that's not putting children first by underfunding us and not paying our teachers and funding our school district with what we need to give us those smaller classes that, yes, are so important. And I know if our school district could afford it, they, they would do it. You know, I appreciate y'all doing the best you can with the limited resources that we have.
I just don't agree.
Point of order, though, we shouldn't really have discussion unless we have a motion on the table. Point of order for Rob's rules, we really should not have a discussion on, unless we have an active motion to discuss.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. I see, I like the proposed motion for the FY 2018, 2019 general fund budget. The FY 2018, 2019 proposed general fund budget is $160,748,977 and it is a balanced budget. Stockholders was invited to attend a budget review on May 22nd. A public hearing was held prior to the June 11th work session to present the budget to the public. The budget is a 6.32% increase from the previous year and include a blend of local and state finances with not being fully funded by the state. And for this to be a balanced budget, we must ask for a maximum tax increase of six mils. Do I have motion?
Madam Vice Chairman, I, I move that we recommend to accept the fiscal year 2018, 2019 proposed general fund budget and a maximum increase of six mils.
Second.
Terry. Terry, second. It may have been moved by Helena Mello and probably second by Terry Hutchinson. We're ready to vote. All in favor, show, raise your hand.
We really need to have a discussion first. You need to allow for discussion first.
I think we've had a discussion.
No, no.
Okay. Hold on just a second. All right. Any discussion? All right.
Couple of quick comments. First of all, I think both Ms. Reed and Ms., Ms. Cole is correct that we should put our students first. And the people who are not putting our students first is our legislator. Because the fact that they are only funding us at 74% of what they legally are bound to do by 100% is, I, I, I lack words to describe how I feel about that. The fact that that number is decreasing instead of increasing is just absolutely ridiculous. As a board, we are forced basically to approve a budget with a six mil increase that is, for all intents and purposes, going to hurt our local business owners. They are going to bear the brunt of what should be happening from Columbia, and that's not right. Not to our students and not to our business owners. I think the only glimmer of hope is, if you all have been following the local news or the, the national news, is that Supreme Court case that just came out of Illinois talking about sales tax and internet-based businesses and forcing states to collect or allowing states to collect sales tax. If that happens and it's upheld in Supreme Court, we may see some relief in coming years. But as it is right now, do I enjoy the fact that I'm about to vote on a budget with six mil increase? No, I do not. But I also do know that we don't have a choice. And shame on Columbia for not, for making, putting ours in this position. It's absolutely ridiculous. Off my soapbox.
One more comment. Jane. On Wednesday of this week, there is a statewide protest by teachers and other education folks at the, at the State House on Wednesday. It would be one way to express concretely lack of approval of what they're doing. Will it make any difference? No, probably not, but it would express our, our support for public ed.
I agree 100% with what Helena said. There's also another side of this coin. Federal government is part of our problem too. We've got federal programs that are not fully funding also. So it's both sides, but Columbia especially. Fortunately, there is a glimmer of hope. There is one down there, actually a couple that I've been talking to, that possibly within three years, we could have something substantially fixed. But it's going to take three years for it to get work through both chambers to get everybody on board. So a little bit of patience maybe. So there's a glimmer of hope. Until then, our hands are tied. Yell at Columbia.
All right. Anyone else? That's it. All right, let's call, are we ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Six of one. Six of one.
Six one, six one.
Yes, not in favor.
Yeah, all not in favor? Okay, Ms. Smith, are you ready for the 8%? Since we pulled the other two. Okay.
Our board council in cooperation with our financial advisor has prepared the attached bond resolution, which is in your board packet, for your approval tonight. District administration is requesting approval of this bond resolution. This bond resolution will not require an increase in tax mileage. Our debt service mileage will remain at 52 mils.
Any questions?
I'm.
All right.
I move to approve the bond resolution as stated.
Second.
Motion was made by Helena, second by Terry Hutchison. Are there any discussions? Ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Seven zero. All right, I asked to pull the approval of the suspended policy FF naming of facility. And my reason for that was, if it's possible, could we not like for the name of the facility to stay the same, Rock Hill Schools, if you want to add district onto it? Also, if the in-house people prefer, like, just as casual say, Central Office, then I don't see any problem with that. But my biggest concern is to suspend the policy and change the name, when everywhere you look, you will see Rock Hill Schools. When you pull, go by the state, you will see York III or Rock Hill III. And it's referred to as Rock Hill School District, Rock Hill III, all the time. And so my concern was about changing this particular time and coming up with a new name. All right? This is about suspending the policy. Okay?
I, I don't disagree with you at all. I, I, I agree wholeheartedly. The reason for me bringing it up last time is that whether we like it or not, we violated a policy that we had in place. And, and what should have happened is, we should have had a discussion prior to communication going out, calling it the Central Office internally. Because the way the current policy is written, it does say that we should not have official communications. Well, we've had official communications calling it Central Office. So we've basically been violating our own rules. Now, that's why I think that we needed to have the discussion. That said, that doesn't mean that I'm, that I'm proposing that we rename it. I just think that we needed to have a discussion, and putting it on the agenda was a way to have that discussion. Because I think it's important that, you know, when we put policies in place, we really all, if we're going to expect the public and the children to follow it, we as a board and as a district office need to follow them as well. You know, I think it's more of a question of procedure than anything else. I, I think that that's the reason why I asked for it to be on the agenda, because we need to just have a conversation that, that, you know, if we're going to have official communications, we need to follow the policy. That's, that's the end of the story. So going forward, can we please not break our own rules? I, I guess is what I'm getting at. And I'm fine with it staying off. I just needed that out in the open, because it really was not handled per our own policies.
So any other names?
I think I'll just add that we know we are Rock Hill Schools, and our official Rock Hill School District III of York County is our legal, legal name. The intent was never to intentionally change the name. I think just the internal reference of Central Office was the, the thought process to be called. We certainly, as we advertise events and those activities that we participate, especially at this location, you know, we may need to define and use maybe even the specific address, you know, for, for our building. So if you're okay with us internally referring to ourselves as Central Office, we will, we will go forth and continue to do great things.
Any other?
Okay, so.
All right, do we, question? Do we actually have a proposed name that we, on the, you know, we don't have a name suggested even? And so there's nothing to vote on?
No, 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 no. What the discussion was originally was just to, to discuss the policy, because it had, we had basically been circumventing our own policies. That was the reason why.
Okay, we were going straight to following the policy that we, that we had made or had made different.
I'm, I'm making a point. Does that make sense?
That I understand.
I'm making a point.
All right. Are we all in agreement with leaving the policy as is? And leaving the name for the school, for district office as is? Except we got one person right here. All right, Mr. Jim.
As a point of order, did we not remove this from the agenda? It's hard for me to hear exactly, but, but didn't you ask to have it removed from the agenda?
Yes, for discussion purpose. So we should wait.
I mean, is it on the agenda, or is it on the agenda or not?
It's on the agenda as an action item.
Okay, then, then, then we still need a, have you asked for a motion to suspend policy?
Jim, we actually did remove it from the action agenda. So there is a motion, and we are in violation right now. Yes, you are correct.
The, the two points are not action items. This is just, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, well, it, the purpose of a business meeting is take action. The person of a work session is to, is for discussion and to move it forward. So if it's been removed, the vote to remove the items, to me, says that the board is in agreement not to rename the, the building, or if to rename it, they need to follow policy. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Then I, I suggest, I suggest we move on to the next action item. I think we've, I think that's been addressed.
Right. Okay.
All right. We have the second read policies.
And would you like to take the two together, or is it one, if someone would like to pull? Policy DM, cash in the school building. Policy KBE, relations with support organizations. All right. Do I hear motion?
Motion to accept the second read on policies DM and KBE.
Motion was made by Terry Hutchison. Do I hear second?
I second.
Second by Ann Reed.
For vote? I just, okay.
All right, any discussion? Ready to vote? Show of hands, please. Seven zero. All right, policies for first read. Want to take them together, or do we need to take them individual, together? All right, the first one is policy LEB, non-school sponsored support organizations. Policy JJE, JJE slash R, JJE slash E, student fundraising activities. And policy JJEF, student activity funds. Okay, do I have a motion?
Second.
There's been motion by Jane Shaw, and second by Helena Miller. Any question? All in favor, raise your hand.
I, I do have a comment.
You have a question?
Part of the discussion. I just want to say thank you to, to Ms. Smith and her department for working very diligently on talking to support organizations and hearing all of the sides as we've been reviewing these policies. This is not an easy topic. It, you know, everybody needs to be protected, but at the same time, it needs to be safe and not inconvenient for people, and that's not necessarily an easy goal to achieve. So just thank you to you and your people who have put in a lot of work into these policies. I know that we've gotten some feedback, and for the most part, it is positive. Again, it's about keeping the organizations and the district safe. So I'm, I think we've come to, to a situation where neither side is completely happy, and I think that that is the sign of a good agreement. That's when you've reached your ultimate goal, where, where, you know, neither, neither side feel like they won. So thank you.
Okay, so we should get the second read for the agenda for the work session.
We, we need to vote.
This will be placed on the agenda for the work session, the second read for these policies.
Yes. But we have not voted.
Yeah, I know. All right. All in favor, please raise your hand. Seven zero. Okay, thank you. And next we have communication.
Madam Chair, I, I have an appointment I have to go to. I'm going to take leave from the meeting, so I, I will, I will not be present for the rest of the meeting.
You cannot be excused.
Well, you, you can come get.
Bye, have a good time. Okay, we do not have any communications?
No.
Now we have a report from the superintendent.
Some announcements I'd like to share this evening are, all schools and offices in the district will be closed Wednesday, July 4, in observance of Independence Day. Our food service contractor, Southwest Food Service Excellence, OR, SFE, will be hosting a job fair on July 16, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and on July 17, from 1:00 to 4:00, to fill part-time and full-time positions in school cafeterias. Both job fairs will be held in the Flexible Learning Center, and interviews for open positions will be held during each fair. For more information, please contact our food service department at 803-981-1016. Rock Hill Schools will host for the first time a summer graduation ceremony to recognize students who were able to complete requirements for graduation during summer school. The ceremony will be held on July 24 at 6:00 p.m. here at our central office. Members of the Board of Trustees are invited to attend this ceremony. The school board will next meet on Monday, July 9, 2018, when it holds a planned retreat and work session that will begin at 8:30 a.m. at the central office. The next business meeting will be held on Monday, July 23. Please note that the July 9 retreat will not be streamed live. It will be recorded and made available on our website for later viewing. Online enrollment and registration is temporarily down for system maintenance and will reopen on Monday, July 9, for new and returning students. In the meantime, parents and legal guardians can download a registration packet by visiting our website, www.rock-hill.k12.sc.us/register, or by visiting their child's school. Prior to the reopening on July 9, parents should check their email boxes for login information and other helpful tips for registering their children. The Build on the Rock website has been updated with photos. You're encouraged to visit the district's Capitol Building Program, Build on the Rock For more information, this website provides status updates on active and planned construction projects in the district. On the page, viewers can see project descriptions, before and after photographs, and construction timelines. This concludes our announcements.
All right, review of the school board work session on June 11. Held its monthly data session. Heard a report from the engine, engine management, management office, annual board report. Heard a report from the riskies, security, and emergency management regarding the family re-unified exercise. Discuss policy DM, cash in the school building. Discuss policy KBE, relations with support organization. Discuss policy LEB, non-school sponsored support organization. Discuss policy JJE, JJE R, JJE E, student fundraising activity. Discuss policy JJEF, student activity fund. Discuss the board's resolution, 8% of general obligation debt insurance. Discuss other future business, and held an executive session for personnel matters. Are there any other business or future business? Okay, at this time, I'd like for someone to make a motion that we leave this session and go into executive session for hiring personnel matters. Okay? Motion was made by Jane Shaw. Have a second. Second by Wendy Cole. All in favor, raise your hand. Jim gone. So we six zero. Okay, so this meeting stands adjourned. Go into session and reconvene to open session.
So.
It has been moved by Terry Hutchison and second by Wendy Cole.
Oops, sorry.
Okay, any questions? Ready to vote? Please, please should raise your hand. So we have a six zero. Okay, do we have any actions coming from executive session?
Yes. I have one.
All right.
I move that we accept the administration's recommendation for the executive director of secondary education.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Ann Reed, and second by Terry Hutchison. Question, ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Six zero.
Six one.
Six zero.
Six E.
All right, do I have another motion?
Yes, Madam Vice Chairman. I move that we accept the administration's recommendation for principal at Rollins Road Middle School.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved by Helena Miller, and second by Ann Reed. Did we accept the motion? Any questions? All in favor, raise your hand. Six zero.
Six one.
Six zero.
Six E.
All right, do I have another motion?
Yes, Madam Vice Chairman. I move that we accept the administration's recommendation for principal at Rollins Road Middle School.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved by Helena Miller, and second by Ann Reed. Did we accept the motion? Any questions? All in favor, raise your hand. Six zero. Now, do we have another motion?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair. I move we accept the administration's recommendations for athletic director at South Point High School.
I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Terry Hutchison. Moved by Teri Hutchinson, seconded by Wendy Cole. All in favor, raise your hand. Six zero.
Six zero.
All right, do we have any other?
Yes.
All right.
I move that we accept the administration's recommendation for principal at Northwestern High School.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Moved by Wendy Cole and seconded by Ann Reed. That we accept the position of principal at Northwestern High School. All right, any questions? All in favor, raise your hand. Six zero. All right, do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Who was the motion?
Who made the motion? Everybody say so moved.
Let's give it to Teri.
Okay, Teri made the motion.
Okay.
And seconded by Wendy.
Okay.
And six zero.